Welcome, everybody, to Craft Board Gaming for the APA. Are you sick of the pandemic? Have you watched everything on Hulu and Netflix? Have you gone through all of your crappy puzzles? Do you wish you'd spent some more time developing some indoor hobbies, even though it's Colorado? Well, we've got the session for you. We're gonna try to aim for 30 minutes, but we're gonna talk about craft board games that you should be playing. And unless you've been under a rock, or maybe quarantined in a house for six months, you may have missed that there's a complete revolution in board games. So this is not the "your mother's, your father's game of Risk," or "game of Monopoly." There's a whole revolution in board games. And so we're gonna show you how the hobby has changed, and how city planning plays into it. And now, there may be some tie-ins to engagement in some projects, in actual city planning stuff, but this is really directed for members, and families, and friends, and some things, and a hobby that you really should have been doing five years ago, that you can start now, and how other people are experiencing city planning through board games, which has made a huge leaps in stride. So we are here at my friend's house. His name's Jason, but we call him Smiley. I have to warn you, he gets very excited about this. He is very, very excited about board games. He's our gaming stamolier. He knows everything about games. He teaches the rules. You tell him you're interested in 16th-century Italian painting, he will find a board game for you. So we are here at Jason's house. He's gonna be our host. We're gonna tag-team explaining 10 games, 10 or so games, and then we'll be open for questions at the end. And we're gonna record this, in case you have friends that didn't make it. So I do have to warn you, he gets very into it. He's like that one person at the city planning public meeting that you love and hate. He's very excited. He's a planning groupie as well, so he should be able to kind of speak our language, and tell us why some of these games are really good for city planners. So we're gonna go in. Hello?
Hey! How's it going?
Good. How are you doing, everybody? This is Jason. We call him Smiley.
Yeah, so I'm Smiley. I'm the gaming stamolier. It's a little weird to like be looking at his phone rather than looking at you, but I guess that's how it works. Anyway, so we are...
There we go.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, it's a little bit better. At least I'm kind of looking at you through the camera. So anyway, welcome to my humble abode. We'll like walk in just at least a little bit here. So really, the thing is, is that when you want to choose what board game to play, what you need is you needed working so well, yay. And so that's my job. I work for... We have a little gaming convention with Pike Speed Gamers. Just gotta throw a little plug into them. We've run a convention in Manitou Springs, and we do that every year. Unfortunately, we're canceled this year due to COVID, but we hope to be back strong next year, or whenever like things open up. So throw that in there. Really, it's interesting for the uninitiated. Board games that most people experienced growing up in America, you know, it's kind of just Risk or Monopoly, and it's kind of this long, drawn-out kind of thing, and it ends up that, you know, there's just angry people at the end, and you're crushing your opposition, and, you know, people are, you know, have to sit out for like hours. There's tables being flipped. And the Germans have a very different outlook on board games. And so their thought is that board games are really a family affair. And so a couple of the different things that they think that are important then in a board game is that you want to make sure that everybody can play until the end. You want to play something that's fairly short, so you can have all the members of the family that can be engaged, right? So you can't have like a three-hour-long kind of thing for, you know, like a six- or eight-year-old kid. You still want something that has some strategy that's gonna make it interesting, so the decisions have to be interesting for adults as well as children. And then, on top of all of that, usually it's not entirely skill-based, so skill and strategy kind of comes into play, but then there's some luck, which then gives everybody the opportunity and a chance to win. So kind of that match of combination is what the Germans used in order to model their board games. And so, you know, back in, probably in the 90s, there was, you know, Settlers of Catan, which now is just known as Catan, like that. There was sort of this like resource trading game, kind of really gained a whole bunch of buzz, and it's now gone on to sell millions of copies. That's where the Germans sort of originated with it. Through, of course, the internet, things kind of spread across, you know, from Germany and the US. And so now, actually, although it's somewhat niche, like it continues to become more and more mainstream. And in fact, so the board games, named after, you know, since they originated in Germany and Europe, right? They're sort of referred to as Euro-style board games. And that's what Wade and I are gonna show you today. There's a variety of different games. And then the thing is, is that there are literally, I'm a mind for some of you out there, that there are tens of thousands of different board games actually that are out there. And so many of them have been produced even just in the last like five or 10 years, right? So we're living kind of in the golden age of board games, whether or not, you know, whether or not you're in fact aware of what's kind of happening. You know, you can find some of the games now even that we sort of refer to as like these new style, Euro-style board games. There's some of this stuff that you kind of look at Target, and like, "What the heck is this?" Right? And so it's gotten to the place where, you know, even if it's mainstream, as Target is sort of selling games like that. So anyway, this, of course, is my hobby and my passion, and in fact, how Wade and I met many years ago.
I've known him for 15 years. He's never laid out a nice staff report like this about Eurogaming. Like, glad we're recording this.
Exactly. So I'm excited to show you a bunch of different board games. They're all somehow like tie into city and city planning, because Wade said that, I guess, that your convention that you've got going on right now is related to that. So we're gonna try to take what you all do professionally, and kind of wed it with my passion as a hobby, and just see what kind of neat things that we can kind of come out of that, and provide some cool recommendations that I think, some games that are a lot of fun, that you can do. One of the, I think, one of the greatest things about board games is that they allow people to, you know, there's a way in which people are able to interact, so it brings people together, so that they can do something. It kind of gets us away from our screens. And I in particular really enjoy the tactile nature of games, where you're actually dealing and interacting with pieces. And because you're the one that kind of has to enforce the rules, it also, it really is a great job of tickling the mind. And so it's just a great way to get together, have some fun together, and we're just, we'll go, and we're gonna have a tour of different city planning board games. So I will walk over here.
All right, take us away. And we're gonna start from the bottom, and work our way up in terms of complexity for board games.
Yeah, so there's a variety of different games that are complicated. So what they sometimes refer to, these are called gateway games. So these are games that you might introduce to people that are somewhat new to the hobby, or new to this type of game. So this is called Carcassonne, which is, it's a town in France, is what the game is modeled after. This is a, I sort of set this up. This is a game, you know, between three players. It kind of simulates a little bit of what it would be like in play. It's the city planning theme that is associated with it here, is that these dark areas in here, these are cities, and they will score based upon the size of the city. These shields will give you extra points. On your turn, this is a really simple game. On your turn, you're gonna have a tile. You'll draw another one. You'll choose from between those two tiles, and you'll add it to the board. The only requirement that you have is that the roads have to continue, the cities have to continue. And if it's just grass, it's grass to grass. So all of these tiles have been placed legally. It's set in like 16th-century France. So there's also these cloisters here, which have these little, they're these places. These score points based upon the areas that are around it. So it's super simple. Like, I've explained most of the rules. The only other thing is, is that you can lay somebody down in like a field, and they'll score for all the cities that are adjacent to that field. It's, this plays like in, you know, 30, 45 minutes. There's a ton of expansions. And so one of the things that I really like about it is that the basic game is actually is very simple, and easy to access. But what's cool is that there's a million and one expansions that add to it. And so you get like different types of buildings, and different pieces. And so it can really make it so that it actually is much more complicated and involved. And what's nice is that over time, if you've learned it, you get a couple of expansions. Now you've got this really rich board game that you're playing, even though you kind of started with something that overall is a pretty basic introduction to the whole genre. This is easily available like kind of at any sort of game store on AMP. It's like super available.
20, 30 bucks?
20, 30 bucks, right, online. Like, it's nothing, not very expensive. If you get into it, there are, there are like some big box variants that include a whole bunch of the expansions. So be kind of like, "Oh, I want kind of a bunch of the variety." That actually is a nice way to get some good value out of that. And so this game's actually been around for a long time. And this is like, it's like the bread and butter of like original-style board games.
Yes.
All right. So now, we'll let Wade, Wade will be here. I'm gonna swing around.
So I'm gonna start with something I'm gonna recommend to Sheila and Michelle, that we buy like APA copies. This game's called Sprawlopolis, and it's relatively new. It's like 10 or 12 bucks, or 12 or 15 bucks. You literally put it in your pocket. And this is another innovation in board game, is that you know always competitive games. Carcassonne's kind of a competitive game. There's a whole new genre of cooperative games. So you actually sit down and kind of play together. So for kids, they're great. For adults, they're great. If you want to get together, share time with people, kind of build community, but you don't want to be competitive and flip tables and throw things at each other. There's some of these cooperative games, and we're gonna show you a couple. This game's literally like a deck of cards. The cards have different zones: industrial, commercial, parks, and roads. And the whole group just starts playing cards down. Each person goes around and plays. They have to play over some other areas. They try to create different zones. And then the brilliant design in this game is that every card has like a point condition. So the group plays to see if they can get the most, more points than they did last time. So this one's Sprawlopolis and Bloom. It's about parks. So every game you play is different, and there's tons of variation just with this teeny deck. And this game is like all of, you know, 20, 25 minutes. So you don't like it, you move on with your day. And if you like it, you play it a couple more times. But this is a relatively recent find, and I want to get this at the next planning conference that we're all allowed to have and see each other, and just put it at the table, and just start playing games with people. So this is one of the rare ones that you all actually play together kind of against the game. That's Sprawlopolis.
Where were we gonna go next, Wade? Were we...
Rampant Queen Domino?
Queen Domino, okay. And if you wanted to go ahead and talk about that one? You want to talk from there? You want to...
Sure, yeah. So Queen Domino, this is one you can generally find like Target. You can find it almost most stores. Again, this one's like $25, $30. If you can match things, you can play this game. And Domino refers to literally dominos. If you play dominos with your family, you grab tiles, you lay them out, you connect them to similar types, and then you multiply them by these crowns. So this is a great one for kids, but it's actually really fun for adults. And then you actually get buildings. Buildings have to go on orange spaces. You get these cute little castles, and these cute little pieces. This one is like 20 minutes. Everybody takes a tile, places a tile. Matchy-matchy. It's good for architectural compatibility teaching. And so you go through, and there's a little queen. People compete for her. She gives you extra points. Again, this one is like maybe 30, 45 minutes. Has a little bit more depth than Carcassonne. And my nine-year-old loves this game. And then we play it at board game when we meet up with adults, because it's so much fun. So this one, again, really fast. Really highly recommend this one. It's like an intro game if you have somebody who's like, "I don't like games, or too complicated, or too many rules." Like, literally, can you, you know, have you played dominos before? Have you matched colors? That's all you have to do is match colors. And then, one thing we didn't talk about is most of these games, like Smiley was alluding to, they're not a player elimination, like Risk. They're victory point games. So almost all these games basically tally up the highest score, and that's the person that wins. So even if you're not as good as like somebody else's, like a, you know, an engineer, and they always win that kind of mathy games, you can kind of like be playing against your score each time. So a lot of these games, I think one of the revolutions in board games are like victory point conditions. So you just kind of, different ways to get points. So that's Queen Domino. It's widely available and super popular.
All right.
Quadropolis?
Quadropolis? Okay. Here, I'm gonna hand that over to you.
This one, this one might be a little bit trickier to find. So what's interesting about all of these is that, so listen down below, right? This is the publisher here, it's called Days of Wonder. Days of Wonder is actually is known for making really pretty board games. This is probably a little bit more expensive, and it kind of, it's a sense of that you get what you pay for, because it just ends up that you get some slightly nicer pieces, you know, so that the tiles are a little thicker. You know, you've got these cool like glass kind of, you know, translucent pieces here. Just gonna go ahead and grab out, because they're just, they're cool-looking, right? I mean, it's so much of the game is like, it's about having some good pieces to play with. So anyway, what's going on in this one? So you're building the city, you're trying to build the best city. What's interesting here is that this introduces a bit of like kind of a drafting mechanic. So you have your architects, and they're placed on the outside of this common board. And then what happens is that you will go, and based upon the number that's here, you'll select the piece. So if I played down this number two, it's the second piece in this row. I'm gonna take this one and put it here, and then I'm gonna place it on my board. And what's interesting about this is that I have to put it in either the two-row or the two's column. So it's a little thinky, because you gotta be like, "Well, I want this tile, but I've gotta place it here. What number do I use in order to get it?" Like, if I wanted to put it in the three-row, I'm gonna put it against the three. You know, I need to use my three architect, not my two architect. And then, when you place it, each of the different buildings is a different sort of type. So you have parks, you have harbors. There's some government buildings that are in here. Some housing, and you can go like kind of office stacks, and shops, right? And all those different buildings, based upon where they're placed, they end up that they give you then different amounts of points. The other thing that you're kind of managing in this, and it's just, and really, I wouldn't get into it, except the pieces are so cool. So what you've got is that certain buildings, they will give you population, and it's just these like super cool like translucent guys. And I guess that if you look, they're the same. So if I come over my Carcassonne game, like you can see that, that's the same sort of shape. So this, this little person is referred to as a meepal, okay? And so Carcassonne has these original meepals. These are cool like translucent meepals. These meepals represent your population. So as you get them, like, certain buildings will drop population to your city, and so you'll acquire them. And then what you need to do by the end of the game is you need to find places for those, for that population to work and be employed. If you end up, you have a bunch of people that don't have places to work, then it ends up that you're gonna be penalized at the end of the game. The same thing, you have resources, and the resources either power, you know, power your buildings. If you're generating excess energy, that's wasteful. And so again, there's sort of penalties. So it's kind of this cool balance that's going on there. And what's really, and again, what makes it, you know, what drives kind of the competition, and what drives most of the competition in many of the games we're talking about, is that it isn't so much that there's really a direct kind of competition, like, you know, this is the red player's board, this is the yellow player's board. They're entirely separate, but you're competing for the same set of tiles. So the competition's a little bit somewhat indirect that way. And so nobody can fully ruin your plan of like, they're not gonna be able to place like a building, for example, here, that you can't use. And so that's kind of, that's a neat aspect of this one. I don't know, I'm not as familiar with the availability of this one, because this one's a little bit of an older Days of Wonder title, but still really fun. Days of Wonder makes up a number of actually good games, like, so I also recommend that just those often, I mean, for people that really are into aesthetics, they'll be drawn to these kind of games again. And they kind of have this sort of this middle-level type of complexity that we're sort of... Are we gonna move on to...
I'll do Big City.
Do you want to do Big City? You were gonna let me do Big City first, but I know that your love of this game is really strong here. So go ahead, Wade.
All right. So this is Big City. This is one of my favorite games. It's been one of my favorite games for a long time. By far, this is probably the most expensive game here, but this is like easily the most visually stunning game once it's built out. And out of all the games here, if you were to, you know, want a game that you could put at like an outreach event, just to have people sit down and think about city planning, and just play through as approachable, but actually taught some people a little bit about planning, I think this is the game. It's really visually appealing. They re-released it, it's 20-year edition, so you can see it's been out for a while. It was actually designed by a Supreme Court Justice in Germany. So as Smiley said, the Germans really take their board game seriously. Designed by the Supreme Court judge. And this one has the nicest pieces by far. But it actually has, even though it might look a little complicated, it's actually really simple. You have cards that have lots on them. So you have lots 17, 18, 19. The more lots that you can assemble, and the bigger building you can build, the more points you get. You can add a streetcar, and you connect, you have connectivity, and you get more points. There's parks that give you additional points. There's civic buildings that give you more points. And if you have commercial buildings closer to the core, that helps you. And residential buildings give you points when they're farther out. So I know it's not totally mixed-use that we do now, but at least it starts teaching people kind of like why cities were built the way they were built. And then, and just like a really mean thing, like you can drop factories down, and everybody's properties next to factories lose points. So this one has a little bit of mean-spiritedness, but it's not too bad. There's only two factories. But this one, by far, when this one's out on a table, people just stop, and they gawk at it. And it's actually really, really simple. You just have a car. All you can play is the cards that you have in your hand. And so you can play it and just learn it in two seconds. And if you play it more, you start to learn that there's some timing issues of when you play buildings, when you wait for other people to do things, and assembling bigger lots. So this game is one of my favorite games. It's probably, this one is probably like $80 to $100. Most of, none of the other games are even close to that. But this one is worth it. This is one of the few games I would have like at a planning event, just if people sit down and just start building cities, and just get them to think about how cities are constructed. So it actually emulates cities really well, and it's just really fun. Can't think of anybody who, city planning friends or not, who've played this, who really haven't enjoyed it. It's just a blast, and it's been re-released, and so I think it's pretty available at most places. Yeah, there's, I mean, you can see why it's so expensive. Like, it's actually architects in the group, and planners who've had to do kind of things in grad school and studios, who actually build like almost a scale. It's almost like doing a scale model. There's parks, and there's different types of residences. I think it's a Canadian firm. So their city hall is emulated off of something in Toronto. So there's no kind of Simpson-style historic building one like we have in the United States. But this is by far one of my favorite games, and one of the most accessible games. All right.
We're moving on to...
Cook Cut Parks?
Yes.
Okay. For the DIY family member.
Exactly. So this, this one, this also should be pretty readily available. I'm probably looking at online, or like a board gaming specialty store, because Renegade is a con studio. So we went to, there's a big board game convention that happens annually in Dallas, of course. It's canceled this year due to COVID, like many other things. But they, we were demoed this game when we were there. And so what's really cool about it is that everybody is given a sheet of paper, right? And it has all of these different buildings that are on it. And each turn, you roll the dice, and it's just, there's a single, there's a single dice. So yes, now it's a single dice. And so it will tell you what type of cut you need to make, and how long that cut needs to be. So this is saying that I need to make a cut of length two, and another cut of length two. So two cuts of length two. So I would go on my sheet, and I would end up that I would actually cut into my sheet, and I would cut a length of two into the sheet. Eventually, right, with the right set of cuts, it'll end up that pieces then fall off. What you're trying to do, you know, like, what are you doing by chopping up all these, all these different elements, is that you're trying to match these cards. So you have these cards in front of you, and this is saying, "Oh, what I want to do is that I want to park here." And in fact, this little bridge indicates this park has to be connected. It has to be the same piece of paper that has a park on one end, and then whatever you want on this other end. Here, there has to be, you know, a water feature, and this has to be, I think, like a sporting kind of area. So each of those has to be there. And then, as you complete them, you get a little bonus, which makes it so that it's easier in order to accomplish your other ones. They, some of the cards, most of the cards are easy to do, and you can kind of play with like a simpler level. And then, there's some of the cards, and in fact, I think that might have been one of the... So there are two different backs, right? And so these cards with the, with these darker backs, these are like kind of the more advanced version, and it just means that they're just a little harder to put together. I actually would say that this game, we may have even dropped back a little bit in complexity level as far as this one's concerned. Again, my kids have played it. They've really enjoyed it. You know, it's just as simple as, "Oh, I'm just gonna go, and I'm just gonna, you know, I'm just making cuts into the piece of paper." So kind of, you're really trying to channel like you're in your kindergarten. This is really gonna do it for you. But again, and this plays super fast, right? Because usually, it's just five cards you're trying to make. You're chopping up just a single piece of paper. So you're looking at, you know, 15, maybe 30 minutes at most. But again, a really fun way of kind of assembling like, assembling your own little city. Wade, do you want to talk a little bit about...
Yeah. My City.
My City? Because that's just, as a little thing, My City is, Wade kind of goes into it. This is probably the latest innovation in kind of the types of board games. And so he's gonna share with you as to what that really is here.
Yeah, so city planning games are both late to the show, and this new innovation, they're called legacy games. So think about it, if you were like writing a book, or going to a movie with other people, and like crafting the narrative as you were all there together. And so legacy games are this new innovation that have really kind of pegged all the number-one games are legacy games. And so the premise of a legacy game is that you're all playing the same game. You're kind of sharing different bits. It's usually competitive within the game, but the game actually evolves. And so after the first game, there's a reveal, something happens. You start to add stickers to your board. Like, you rip up cards, you throw cards away. And I always thought it'd be perfect for a city planning game, so you could kind of evolve a city through time. And it's just really tactile. It's fun. We've played some other games. Pandemic, I know it's a bad title right now, but it's the number-one, most-popular board game, is this legacy game where you play, you know, basically the same group of friends has to commit. So it's a little bit, it's almost more of a commitment than like a marriage or something. You've gotta have the same people meet together and play generally like 10 or 15 games of the same game. But if there's nothing I've done that's more engaging than this, it evolves. There's a story, and you actually craft the story. And so if you meet another group of people who've played, they've actually maybe had a different outcome. So it's almost like a choose-your-own-adventure board game, movie, book that you put together with your friends. So talk about like building community. So My City is the first attempt in city planning by this. And I'm about halfway through it, and it's done a pretty good job. It starts really simple. You have like a little area, and you have a little board. And really, you just have these different types of buildings, three types of zones again. And the first game, you just try to surround trees, cover up rocks, and just kind of introduces you to the game. And then you get wells, and they score points. And then you're putting buildings of the same type together, score you points. And the cool thing is that it's done in chapters. And so you play through three games. Each one introduces a new concept, and the game kind of starts to scale and scale and scale. And then whoever wins each game kind of gets these overall points. And so there's a winner at the end. But it's really more about the journey. And so the second game is about churches, and then the flood, and there's mines. And then, you know, your board's gonna start taking up these mountain spaces, and you're gonna start evolving. And so it's the first, it's the first attempt at these legacy games. And I'm hoping that there's more, because city planning is the perfect place to like, build a city, and compete for things, and kind of have it kind of evolve differently. And so I'm halfway into this one. It's really interesting. It's really approachable. Anybody could sit down. If you've ever loved Tetris when you were a kid, or any type of puzzle, putting together puzzles, Like anybody could sit down, if you've ever loved Tetris when you were a kid or any type of puzzle, putting together puzzles, this is, this is the game for you. So you could just get addicted to kind of arranging it to kind of maximize your points. So this is the first introduction to legacy games and like really these, these, probably a lot more of these city planning legacy games that come out.
All right, we're, we've got just like a minute left and that actually might be really good. If you want to just flash it over here.
So just, there's just, there's a really good looking guy on this box. I mean, he has an uncanny resemblance maybe to somebody that you might be looking at right now. This is in fact me, this is, well, there's a picture of me. So our, so this in fact is our very own Wade, who's on, he is on the cover there. And in fact, he, he was kind enough to sign, sign the copy. So this is, this is Wade's board game. This actually is the most complex of all the games that are, that are involved here. It's called Fortune Steel. It's based on the evolution of Pablo like around the, the early 1900s. And the, and our friend Don Lloyd, he owns a company called Nightworks. He's the one that actually published and produced it. What's really cool about this game is that, so it's a city planning game, okay? And what you've got going on here is that it's, so there's this, this map of the neighborhoods of Pueblo. And there's different areas that you have. So you kind of start from city hall, from El Pueblo, and there's city hall that's located here. Then you'll expand into the, all of the various areas, you know, all the different kinds of neighborhoods. And so there's, there's a number of different elements that are kind of coming at play. So one of the things that's neat is that Wade was, was inspired, it's funny to you because I'm like, I'm talking about your game, right? So was, there, there's some, some card driven games. And so this, this game, everything you do is directed by your cards. And so Wade did a really nice job of incorporating the history of Pablo into it. And so you'll have a card and the card then has some sort of historical picture. And almost all of these were obtained from the historical society.
Yeah.
Right down in Pueblo. And, and so then they're also all related to some sort of event or something that's going on around this time period. And what's cool is that it, it, the, you know, so you get a little bit of flavor text that's kind of teaching you a little bit about the time and era of Pueblo. So you've got like this cool historical element. From a gameplay perspective, what's cool is that the card can be used for some generic operations. So this three can be like, you know, I can build some houses or some mines or put some pieces out there on the board. Or you can also use it for then its special ability. And you kind of read this ability and then you say, well, I'm going to use it for then its special ability. And usually it's somehow like thematically tied to, you know, the brick sewers here. And, and over time, what's really neat about this game, so it takes place, there's three different eras that you, you move through. And the city kind of like builds up over time and, and kind of evolves. And so what's kind of cool is that by the time the game's over, particularly there's a bunch of buildings that are all over the game, all over the map. He's got, we've got all these kind of cool wooden pieces. The cubes kind of, you know, indicate your claiming. And then you've got little houses and these hotels, I think are like mansions that you can, that you can build. And, and commercial buildings that can go out there. That all kind of represent, you know, different elements that were kind of going on in Pueblo at the time. So obviously there's a big tie, Pueblo, you know, has a steel mill. And so, you know, the steel mill of course was very integral to Pablo's development. So, and then it kind of ties in the mining element from Colorado, you know, from, from the, you know, nearby towns that were bringing in the coal in, in, you know, into the steel mill. So this game also does have some, some interesting interaction among the players. So it's got a little bit of kind of, I mean, probably this one has probably the most possible mean spiritedness in it. Since there are some, some cards that really enable you to, you know, there's like a flood that will like kind of wipe out some buildings or there's a fire that will. Or, you know, there's a bit of like a mafia element where like there's a riot and they can end up that the rioters can destroy some buildings. And so there's, there's some like kind of destructive elements, probably more destructive than actually is in truly is in Pablo's history. But kind of again, sort of taking a little bit of that artistic license in order to make more of a fun, kind of dynamic sort of board game. The sad thing about this one really is, is that it actually was really good success and there aren't any copies anymore, right? So I think it's totally sold out.
If you get in the, you have to get in the black market.
Yes, the black market. But, but it is really neat and, and obviously so, you know, if you want an opportunity to play it, like Wade obviously, you know, has a copy. And so he's, he's always happy to like put it out there and teach it and play with, with people. And so it's just, this is, this is a neat, like kind of, it's a bit more involved, kind of immersive sort of experience.
Yeah, I was trying to see if you could find like classical revival, there's city, city beautiful movement. So like actual planning, city beautiful movements in here someplace. The Gilded Age, Greek immigrants. And so this one actually tried to be as inclusive as possible, like children is a card, women's auxiliary societies are a card. All the major immigrant groups have different functions in the game tied to kind of where they interacted with people. So it actually teaches you about history. If you play it enough, it'll teach you about city planning elements as well as kind of just even really rudimentary things like sidewalks and kindergartens were, were innovations of the turn of the century. We don't even think of those things anymore as innovation. So all those things are in the game. And so if you play it enough, you'll actually kind of learn about history in the turn of the century as well as how cities were built in the Western United States. So this is one I hope to like do some other cities, do Denver, do other cities and tweak some of the mechanics and add different cards and have like the base system and kind of build up or down based on what the town's history is. So it was really fun. So I think that's, that's it. We tried to respect your time. And I think we have, we have way more games, we could go all night.
Oh yeah, there's, there's, there's.
We have a couple of ones, but we're going to try to keep it pretty close to the time limits.
Yeah, and so the thing is, is of course, there's just, I mean, I hope that you get a sense of just, there's a variety of, variety of board games that are sort of out there. Obviously we hit these because they were city planning related, but there's a bunch of like great games also that are out there that they aren't necessarily city planning ones that also are really cool and interesting as well. And so it's just been something that Wade and I, we are really closest friends. And so we just hope that you enjoyed a little tour of some, of some planning board games.
Yeah, we've got some time. Sheila wants to be moderator if there's any questions or comments. I have a feeling one of them might be like, is there a list of these? So I can put together a list tomorrow or this weekend. If you wanted to see, if you want to remember what they were and if you want to go out and try to find some of them.
Yeah, will you put together a list for me to post on the app and probably the APA website?
Yeah. You have to twist our arm, right?
Yes, exactly. Oh, that's, that's tough.
We don't want this stuff, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to stop recording.
All right.